I would like to call meeting order. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We're gonna try to speak really loud into microphones until they stop working, but we are on that. Just a couple of housekeeping rules or things that I wanted to bring up. If you haven't filled out your form to get the packets and agenda, please do so. There's slips on the back. We had a little hiccup on this last one, but we did work with our IT and hopefully it'll go out. So bear with us on that. And if you haven't filled this out, please do. If you think you're on the old list, you're not gonna get it because we started a new list. So other than that, roll call, everybody is here. I'd like to introduce and welcome our new city attorney, Fritz Knott. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we're gonna head right into this agenda. We have the adoption of our consent agenda. There's a few things on here that we won't be able to obviously adopt. That would be the minutes from the previous meetings. They're not in. But I know Mary is working on that. I did see staff reports are in here. The library minutes are in here. And I hope everybody got a chance to see that. Any questions on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to add a couple of items to the agenda if I can do that at this time.
Okay.
First one would be a schedule of closed meetings with each of our full-time employees with the city council and the full-time employee approximately an hour. So I was wondering if we could add that under new business.
Okay, that would be number six, schedule closed meetings with full-time employees.
Right. And the only other one I noticed, I looked at the tape from the last meeting, we never did approve the consent agenda from what I could tell from the last meeting. So if we can have those items rolled forward and considered under this consent agenda. I don't, I didn't see anything on the video and I don't see a recording of consideration or vote on the last meeting consent agenda. So I'd like to roll those items forward.
All right, that would be number seven. While Tim's looking for, to make sure that we have everything from the last consent agenda added. Is there any other new business anybody would like to add?
I got a question about the closed meeting with staff. When is live?
We could discuss that when we talk about it. It would just be an acquaintance. I think we have some new council members here and I think it'd be an opportunity for them to meet and get acquainted with the staff as well as the staff to get acquainted with the council. We could share some of our responsibilities. We could better understand the responsibilities that our staff members have, the full-time staff, full-time staff to get a better understanding of our responsibilities to the people in Timbersville. I think it's a good idea. It'll only be an hour. It doesn't have to be closed unless our attorney says it has to be. If the employees want it to be open, it could.
Do you know when? Do you have a date in mind or just?
Well, that's the agenda.
So let's, we'll just add that and then we'll talk about that when we get to our. All right, anything else for new business? Any additions? All right, well, let's move forward then. We have old business that we need to take care of first. And the first thing on our old business agenda would be the motel property that's been for sale downtown.
Can you?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes.
I think our approval of the consent agenda for this meeting was interrupted, so we should probably make a motion to approve that. And I have the minutes from our last meeting, but I don't notice there were any attachments. Let's see, I guess there were claims and payroll, no committee reports and approval of minutes.
Which, we don't have the minutes, but we can approve the payroll and claims.
That was from January twenty-three.
All right, so all in favor of adopting the consent agenda, the approval of claims and payroll, and we'll have to approve minutes when we get them?
Do we have a motion?
Well, yeah, and actually I would like to pull something off of the consent agenda for discussion before we approve it.
Okay.
If I can do that.
Please do.
Can we clarify which meeting we're approving?
Yes, that's a very good idea, Councilmember Grohl. This would be from the last consent agenda. So this would be the check register from the last consent agenda. And there's a couple of checks I have questions on and some cash. And I just wanted to bring them up. I have a list, well, there are three checks that went out to the IRS. They're all dated twelve twenty-two, twenty-two. So that would be last year. That would be the last council. I guess I'm wondering why it's the responsibility of this council to approve checks that were written, signed by the last council on those three. My other question is, we also had a check for ten thousand two hundred and three dollars to Cali and Lemons. The date on that is twelve thirty, twenty-twenty-two. So there again, I'm wondering why this council was approving checks paid or signed by the last council. We also have a check from Ellers and Associates. That's outside services assistance forms, I believe. That's for the TIF forms. Is that correct? The drafting of the TIF forms that we will be talking about tonight. We also have another one, check number three two five three three. That is dated January ninth twenty-three, but I don't have a copy of that yet. I guess I'm wondering who signed that? If that was a member of the old council or a member of this council. And if it was a member of the old council, again, why would we be approving that? My major concern, add to, one other one is the Bitworks. There's a check to Bitworks for two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. There was a new computer purchase. I don't know right now what the threshold is for the city staff or the office. I, they said a thousand, just like public works or not. But I don't see any approval of that payment. So that's two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then a new computer was purchased and I, I don't know where it went. What, you know, what it was for. A little concerned about an investigation going on and us bringing in a new laptop into circulation without coming for the old one or what it replaced. That's my concern with that. My other concern is with the cash. There's forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents. It's categorized under labor distribution. We got no checks, so I don't know where it went, who was paid. I see in this packet, there is a, there's two check numbers with a dash in between, which tells me that this money was dispersed, forty-six thousand dollars, was dispersed in a range of checks, but I still don't know where they went. And I have a responsibility to the people to account for the money and how it's being spent. That's why I pulled these off. And I guess when we come to a vote, I would like to pull the payroll and the checks off at this point from the consent agenda until these questions are answered.
Get all those notes? Did you? What check numbers? Okay, all right. So moving forward, we won't approve last meeting's consent agenda with claims and payroll until we get copies of the checks or the information a councilman has asked for?
So I believe you can pull it off of there, but it has to come to a vote whether you're gonna approve it or not. You can't just decide not to approve it. You can pull it off for discussion and then you have to come to a motion whether you will accept it or you will not accept it as is. So.
So last consent agenda that was never approved, can we postpone to a definite date of the next meeting to approve it?
I'm not quite sure what that's gonna do because it's already been paid. So.
So these checks were paid without being approved by the council?
Well, I assume that they were approved by council. I mean, you just caught it when you finished watching the video. I assume that it was. I think everybody else assumed that it was.
Well, I guess my question would still be then, why would we be approving checks that were the responsibility of the previous council? Why are all these, a lot of these December?
I would assume that due to the AP cycles, when there's a change in administration, you're gonna have some overlap. I mean, we can't bring the previous mayor and previous council members back here to vote on consent agenda item for those that were paid the tail end of twenty-twenty-two. Fritz, I don't, you can help us with this.
I mean, that is correct. I mean, the consent agenda exists as a convenience to you. If there's something, that just means there won't be any debate. It's just a matter, a manner of handling what's on the agenda. If you choose to take it off the consent, it has to be placed on the agenda. You put it somewhere on the agenda. I think the way it was handled last time, it sounds to me like it's a practical matter. You continued it or you tabled it if in fact there was no action taken on it. And you can certainly act on it now. So that's the original question, I think, that came my way. The next part is, can a subsequent council approve checks that were brought to the council and were expected to be approved in the previous month? The answer is yes. I mean, you do have that discretion at any time. You certainly also have the discretion to review checks that were paid and single them out. I suggest that you may wanna focus your inquiry on that. In other words, doing an approval of all of the checks that there isn't a problem with, but the ones where you have a very specific problem, you can table consideration of that. Either do it now or table consideration at the next meeting. I understand that's a word.
Okay.
And that way the focus is on those expenditures without necessarily jeopardizing any of the other funds of the city would have approved and wouldn't have been controversial.
Okay.
I do have one answer, well, more. The ones that were approved in January were prior to the swearing-in of the new council. So at that time, the old council still had the option of signing those checks. So I think that's where that came from.
Okay. Then I guess at this point, if it's okay with the council, I would like to pull the, just the following two items off until we get more description and explanation. That would be check number three two five two four. The total of that check was two thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. Included in that was a new computer, actually two new computers, a router. And the other thing that I would like to be pulled up before we approve is the cash. Total cash of forty-six thousand three eighty-seven point seventy-two until we get more information. And I do understand there is some in the packet, but the individual checks are not there.
I can explain that forty-six thousand one. That's under the general fund. Is that the one you're talking about? So Troy?
Yeah, it's a, right.
So that was payroll and it goes through payroll liabilities and it all gets transferred through the general fund. And that was for the final payroll for fire department, council, and the normal payroll for city employees.
Okay.
So the way payroll works, you don't see it as an expense like payroll. You see it go through the whole general fund type thing.
Right, but it is a series of checks.
It is, yes. And it should have been listed, I believe, on that list of bills from last time, that first one that I brought out. So everybody's payroll was included on there.
On the list of bills?
Yeah, on your, I believe it's on the expenditure one. Can we just?
One we got tonight or?
No, last time. Because the other payroll ones should be also listed on there. I wanna say it's on the council. Mine is next.
Is that something that you wanna put onto next meeting so?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that. Of course, it's already with the rest of the council. We just accept the agenda, or the consent agenda for one twenty-three twenty-three with the exception of the check three two five two four to Bitworks and then the cash totaling forty-six three eighty-seven seventy-two.
So that, Troy, just, that would be a motion to accept the consent agenda, providing we get information on the other two.
With those exceptions.
With these two exceptions.
Right.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Old business. The first thing on our old business is the motel property that is located.
Excuse me, Mayor, that was the January twenty-third consent agenda. We do have tonight's consent agenda also.
Which we combined when we first started talking. You said add the consent agenda to this consent agenda.
Well, I think Councilmember Grohl kinda separated them out when we considered the, you know, the first payment.
I just wanted to clarify which ones we were talking about.
Right, right.
I'm not sure procedurally.
Okay.
All right, that's fine. Let's go back. All right, so all in favor of, well, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda for February thirteenth meeting.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All eyes?
No, that was a vague.
Okay, that is in here.
Okay, right, all right. Old business. Number one on the old business is the motel property. It's the vacant lot that's down next to the drive-in. This was old business because the other council had been dealing with this. We inherited it. As far as what I wanted to address is I wanna move forward with moving past the prospective buyer. She hasn't bought the property. It's time to move on, see if we can find somebody else that would like to purchase this property or keep it and do something with the, for the community. I had given the information to our city attorney. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, she's been in default. So I guess I'm proposing that we take the earnest money if it's available and we move forward on our own.
Well, I think there's three options to this. And the first is to give her an extension if she asks for it, thirty to sixty days. The second is to take no action, which makes no sense for the council. And the third option is to, you know, go through the default proceedings. And I think we need to have our attorney send her a letter, you know, notifying her that she is in default. And if she does not come up with the money to buy the property after thirty days, then we can go get the earnest money. So honestly, I was a big proponent of this project. I thought it would be great for the city. You know, it would be great for all of our other businesses in town. It would promote economic development. And the building itself, which I didn't see sketches on, but it would kinda give downtown a facelift. But that being said, you know, she has, you know, not really come forward to close the deal. So we have to take some action going forward.
Has she communicated at all with anyone on the council?
I got a message through Facebook Messenger asking for Mary's contact information because she wasn't getting response. But then Mary, I do believe, got an email. I told Mary to put her on tonight's agenda. After we told her about tonight's agenda, she did not want to join us this evening. She wanted to have a closed meeting with myself. And I don't believe that should happen without actually having an attorney here. But I also don't feel there's a need to prolong what we've been working on. And you guys should all know what's going on before I meet with anybody in my eyes, so.
We've had four, I think, correct, four extensions at this point. Is that correct?
Close to it. I mean, it's an unfortunate situation, but it is what it is.
The original agreement was effective September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, with a closing date of April first of twenty-twenty-two. So we're coming up on a year of past.
And the last extension, last extension expired December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two.
And she did not come to that twenty-sixth meeting, so. I guess what I propose is we send a thirty-day letter that is in the agreement. Then we have to give her that. So Fritz, I would say we let Fritz send the letter. If she wants to meet after that, she can contact him and we can set up a meeting if we need to. Otherwise, we'll move forward.
And what's the thirty-day letter? What's the thing?
It's in the agreement. You have to give her thirty days notice that she's in default and she can act on that. Or we, I believe, Fritz, you can speak to this, but we keep the earnest money and.
Oh, thank you. Right, right.
We can choose.
Yeah, that's, and that's another discussion.
Right.
But I wanna get that ball rolling. Spare that is, that is, those are the terms.
Or she can voluntarily back out of the agreement, which is why it's so strange that she hasn't automatically got her fifteen thousand back. But if she does nothing and she is in default, then the city gets the money if you want it.
So is there gonna be an argument on whether or not she's in default or not?
I would say that if she is, I would expect, were I her or were I advising her, that I would say I'm not in default and they would contest any default. And frankly, I expect that to be the response. But if in fact we send the letter and we don't get a response and after numerous opportunities, she's obviously beyond the times by the form of the contract, she is in default by definition. But realistically, I would be astounded if she didn't, one way or another, get back and say, oh, my bad, and back out of the agreement. It's set up that way. It's more friendly for her than for you.
So we shouldn't let any grass grow under her feet, getting the letter default on.
I would say that that's something I could actually do tomorrow. And we'll start the thirty days going. And we'll see what happens.
In the meantime, I would assume we should start gathering some information on extensions and expectations that would have put her in default that she now has.
I would say I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be putting this fifteen thousand in your budget.
All right, so I'm gonna make the motion that we send the letter to the buyer and give her thirty days to respond. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was all.
Yep. All right, second on the old business is review positions for temporary employees. In the packet, it, there's a couple of things there. So I'm gonna let Tim and Larry kinda give us an update, but some of it I think has already been discussed, but then we have more information as well, so.
I'll let Larry take the current temporary people and then I'll speak to the new process that we have going on.
I did write up a little, a brief summary for the packets.
The tributor.
Find it in here. It deals with our temporary zoning help from Lynn Longnecker. And it was really just a very basic agreement. For these temporary zoning employee Lynn Longnecker, Longnecker, he would be here to assist with zoning questions from residents and to assist clerk treasurer with residents' questions. The pay was twenty-five dollars per hour, twenty-four hours per week. And then to fill in on a part-time basis until the position with the full-time zoning coordinator is filled. The position of temporary employee Molly Nelson is to assist clerk treasurer with various tasks necessary to get the office up to speed. Tasks include, but are not limited to, filing, getting the water bills out and invoice payment. Also at twenty-five dollars per hour. And her hours based on, would be based on current availability. So, you know, it was just a pretty simple agreement to get some help into the office. And both positions are continuing as we speak.
So, yeah, I just got a couple of questions on that. So both are twenty-five dollars per hour. There is no maximum hours per week for Molly Nelson. Is that correct?
Just as needed, on an as-needed basis.
Well, that's not, this says hours based on her availability. Is it as she needs them or as we need them?
Sorry, say it again.
Is it as she needs them or as we need them?
As on her, as we need them.
Based on, based on Molly, based on her availability.
Yes.
So she comes in when she wants.
When we ask her to come in and when she's available.
When she's available. And then the office being up to speed, do we have a projected date on when the office will be up to speed?
No.
Can you?
Well, that's a good segue, lady. That is. It's a good question. And I think Tim has something that will help.
So last week, Mary and I met with Express Temp Services to bring on board, as directed by council, a temporary staff member, twenty hours a week. We interviewed the firm. They were, they seemed very well-qualified, experienced in the area. They have done some governmental work before as well. So we recommend, we recommended signing the contract and we had legal review of that. And Mayor Weber signed that, I think it was on the seventh. It said January on the contract, but I don't think that was right. So we signed that last week.
Yes.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, while you're out of town, having tons of fun down in Texas, helping us out with that. We were given, I believe it was five potential candidates that we looked at today. We narrowed that down to three, I believe. You can correct me if I'm wrong, and one actually backed out.
No, after speaking with the temp agency, they felt she wouldn't be able to fulfill the hours needed.
Okay. So we have two candidates that we're gonna be interviewing on Wednesday, Wednesday morning. They were very good candidates on paper. I'll qualify that. They looked like they could really do what we need them to do. The agency indicated that we'd be looking at a, for what we want, hourly range somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty-two dollars an hour. And I think both of these candidates are coming in maybe right in the middle somewhere. The hours of this position would be ten AM to three PM, Monday through Thursday. And regarding the cost, so they will agree to an hourly rate. And the firm will invoice us, I can't remember if it's monthly or bi-weekly or whatever it is. But there'll, there'll be a charge of one point five their hourly rate. But that covers all their payroll expenses, federal, state unemployment, social security, workers' comp, all of that. And then it also includes their profit. So, which I found to be, the one point five is pretty consistent, I think, in the industry. Something I'm used to seeing historically. So the contract doesn't require that we have them for any length of time, like a designated length of time. We assumed we'd need them about three months, but we would play that by year. They did put a project plan together for this. We hope to be, hopefully, able to make an offer this week. And depending on their availability, they could start as soon as next week. So we'll just have to select a candidate, instruct Express to move ahead with, with the placement, and then we'll go from there with onboarding, and then we'll just continually assess what our needs are. Do we need to terminate it, do we need to extend it, et cetera, et cetera? But right now, we're looking at about three months.
Are either of these candidates qualified or potentially qualified for either of our, or our one open position in the office?
I would say no.
I don't think so.
They are not qualified for all?
What we asked for was more administrative support.
Did they say anything about experience in municipal government?
Their, their resumes didn't note that they had any, that I remember. The agency has experience placing people in governmental agencies, so they're well aware of what our needs were.
Okay, good.
But this will be mainly word processing, get minutes out, get documents out, all those kind of things. I think is the highest priority, and then whatever assistance that can free Mary up to do some of the more clerk treasurer related skill sets. And having that person here when the office is open is really going to help as well. Because Molly, I don't believe, works office hours. They did ask, too, if this could be a telecommute type job, and we said no, we want the person in the office.
Anything on website experience?
They both seem to have good technical skills. I'm trying to think now. It seemed like one did. Yeah, I can't remember exactly. I don't see specific website experience, but, you know. One of the technical ability, yes, you know, as far as building websites. I can see that on the resume. Building websites, I know, that's a, that's a no. But interacting with it, I think that's something that Molly was doing, we must have trained her to do it.
She has not, I have, and I was gonna, she was going to pick that up, we need to verify.
Okay.
But that, that all is determined with what we get in the office here.
Other questions?
My favorite, thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Alright, moving on, we have, number three would be an update on our vacant positions.
Okay, so both the positions were posted on the League of Minnesota City's website, and also in the Giselle County Press, both the newspaper and that weekly circular. We have seen some interest, but nobody's busting down the door. I think we have two candidates thus far for one and.
Nothing from the other.
So we may need to extend the posting, depending on what we, what comes across for applicants. We do have some qualified candidates for the superintendent position, public works. Depending on if we want to extend that or not, we may be trying to get some interviews in before Councilmember Samuelson is not available. Otherwise, we'll have to wait.
Were the people that you've had interested for the pub, public works, so we haven't had anybody interested on coordinator yet?
I have two or three calls for the coordinators zoning, no applications as of yet. About the same amount for public works.
So like you can, they are public works at this point, that's it, okay.
Is there opportunity that we could share these job descriptions with our new partners, Express, and see if they have anybody in their database?
We can, there will be a finder's fee, if we bring them on board.
We could run the seven hundred dollars, though, and then hire them without paying that fee, right?
We could.
Seven twenty-four. Seven twenty, okay. It's just a thought, if we're not getting anybody, they might have some. I, I used to work for Express many, like fifteen years ago, so when I saw the contract, it looked pretty familiar, so.
It, it's a good question, I, I think anything we can do to get, get it out there, if we can post the position on a LinkedIn site or on our social media, anybody in the community, if you have friends who might be interested, just get the word out there.
Mary, are we members of Minnesota Rural Water?
Yes.
We should put that job posting on their site, too.
Okay, I've never done that before, so.
All you gotta do is get a logo.
Okay.
One thing that I'd like to, to bring up is the interview process. And our legal support will have to help me with this. Two members or more is a quorum. So what I would be recommending is no more than two council members be part of a work group that would be doing the interviewing for each of these positions. And my first recommendation for the city coordinator and zoning administrator would be council member Julikhein as a personnel liaison. Mayor Weberg, kind of administrative liaison. We haven't formalized that yet, but we did talk about it in general, generalities. And then Lynn Longnecker, who's been performing that role here temporarily, I think would be a good person to have on the interview team along with Mary, because they'll be working closely together. If there's a commission member that deals with zoning administration a lot, maybe planning, there's a member on that, on that commission, that's an idea.
I just have a quick question, I guess, why not just bring them in before the full council? Why is that a problem?
Oftentimes, people don't want their employer to know they're interviewing for a job or have even applied for a job. I personally wouldn't feel comfortable conducting that kind of interview for these positions in a full council session.
Well, we could do a closed meeting.
I don't believe we can.
No.
The only personnel matters we can do a closed meeting for is, I think, performance reviews. So that's why I'm recommending this, I, I mean, to be fair to the candidates, too, I mean that.
Wouldn't we have a full say eventually as a?
Yeah, they would make a recommendation, they, they put their recommendation together, and that would come to the full council for approval. I think at that point, it becomes public information, once we want to make a hire, that. Obviously, if we brought it here, it would.
Yeah, I mean, it's something, put it in front of the council, it was obvious, yeah. Where, where should I bring the three of you, gather, things public?
The other for public works superintendent, be myself as both personnel and public works liaison. Councilmember Samuelson, public works liaison. Paul Stegner, our public works staff, and again, Mary, who would be working very closely with that person as well. Not sure if there are other commission members that would be appropriate to bring on that, but it certainly could be taken into consideration. I think this will help expedite the process, I, I think it's fair to the candidate, and it, it keeps us from triggering an open meeting law.
And at this point, for city coordinator, we, zoning administrator, we have no candidates.
We do not.
But you've got the process ready to go as soon as you get one.
I'd, I'd like to have the process ready to go, yeah.
And same process for public works, I'm guessing, okay.
Yes. So would you like me to make a formal motion on that? Pending commission appointees?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to put them in place, we have to make a motion, otherwise, it's, we're just having a discussion, so.
Okay, I will make, I suppose I have to make two motions. I'll make one motion for the city coordinator zoning administrator for the interview process and recommendation to hire. Councilmember Julikhein, Mayor Weberg, Lynn Longnecker, and Mary Tomnitz. And I would add that at their discretion, they can feel free to bring in additional member or members as they deem necessary and beneficial.
Alright, so we have a motion from Tim regarding the hiring or interviewing, I should say, of the city coordinator. Putting Larry, myself, Lynn, and Mary in for the interview process, and anybody from any of the commissions that we feel might help us pick the right candidate. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Okay, second motion is for public works superintendent. Same rationale. Membership would include councilmember Grote, councilmember Samuelson, staff member Paul Stegner, and staff person Mary Tomnitz. Again, other members can be included as that group sees fit.
Can I, can I, can you read that list of names again, please?
Sure. Myself, Lee, Paul Stegner, public works, and Mary. Thank you. You're welcome.
Alright, we have our second motion regarding the public work superintendent. Tim, Lee, Paul, and Mary will be on the interview committee. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, number four on the old business is update on law enforcement requests. We have a request on the last meeting for zoning ordinances on the website, and then also the Giselle County Sheriff's Office was looking for some keys to access the bottom of the building, to get to their office, and Troy, can you give us an update as a liaison?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you for the keys, that was, that was great. I think they've been waiting too long, in my opinion. It's over, over six months when, you know, our, our law enforcement didn't have keys to get into their own office in city hall, so. That was a little discouraging to find out that they had waited that long, but I'm glad that they now have keys. The other issue, of course, and this was just as important to Sergeant Jones, was the availability of the zoning ordinances, so they could access them when they were in the vehicles or on the go. And for that, they would have to go to our website to get them, so I guess I'm asking for an update at this point where we are on that, getting the zoning ordinances available for law enforcement, so they can do their job, protect our community.
Well, I think as, as we continue to build the website and get that up to speed, then we'll be in a better position to put the zoning ordinance up there.
Not pressing at this time?
Sorry?
Not pressing?
Well, I mean.
We'll get to it when we get to it.
There are zoning ordinances here in the building, copies are available to whoever wants to come and get them. But as far as getting them up on the website, we're not going to do it tomorrow, because the website needs to be finished.
Ask council permission to make a PDF available to Sergeant Jones, at least?
I think that's possible.
If that will be beneficial.
I, I was going to suggest in the interim, we could bind a copy like we have up here and put it in their office. They could carry it in their car if they want, whatever they wanted to do, but it's no small task.
So, not exactly sure where the full ordinances are, and Lynn has been looking for them, to make sure we have the most up to date. There's a couple of them that look complete, but then there's extra ones in there, so he's been trying to get that done, and he should be back in town the end of the week.
This is a public safety issue. It really is. For law enforcement to be able to do their job, and we can't do our jobs either until, until it's available to us.
Can you go, can you just give us one example of one of our ordinances that they're having difficulty with?
Well, there, there's actually issues with the snow, and the parking was one of them. I think there, I mean, springs in. What else, what else do we need? They would like to have the zoning ordinances available to them on the go, when they need them, in case something happens.
It's Mary, I want to check my somebody, but I do want to say, law enforcement would want to know where the code provisions on nuisances, for instance, if we want to be. And if, you know, they could even give you a short list if there's a problem with that, you know, where the problems were, you think of the license, because you probably give them the, I think it's a very good idea. And give them fine if that's what they want, if they're out there enforcing your zoning code, and my immediate suspicion is they're interested in things like nuisances.
Because we could prioritize what we give them, if, if we can have an idea of what it is they're looking for, so. We can make that happen quicker, we can prioritize the work, I would think, and get in their hands almost immediately, what they, those kind of emergent items would be.
Health and safety, Mr. Mayor, and the house, and those kinds of issues, I don't think they care at all about garage height or anything like that. You know, if it's something that has to do with public health and safety, that's a pretty clear reasonable ask.
I, I did talk to Kyle last week at Popluck supper that we had in town, and he did say that paper is no good, he's seen the book once, and he said it has to be online, and he said every other city around us has it online. I reassured him that it's going to happen, in at least my two years, we're going to have a website that works, hopefully sooner. But, you know, PDF to start, and then we need to give Lynn some support, I, I mean, we keep on talking about support, we just, we need to do it, we need to some, whoever gets hired, they need to help scan. I know I spoke to Mary already about our website, we had some calls concerning our website not working, and we are working on getting the basics up, from what I understand, soon as we switch the old site off, even though it doesn't work anyway. You know, that, whatever we have on that old site will be gone, so what I'd like to do, and I'll get it on the next week, or next agenda, is I want to bring in possibly somebody from the area that is a web developer, and have them look and see how they can help us, so. But right now, I mean, it's acknowledged, we do need to get it on, I think we should set a timeframe, I mean, by, you know, March first, can we get our contact stuff up, and maybe by April first, we have the ordinances. I mean, we just, we.
So I think the context, information, and possibly agendas and packets can get up there prior to the first. The rest of the stuff trying to get caught up on there is going to take a little more time.
Could I, could I make a recommendation, I don't know if this is going to require a motion or not, but I have a background in project management, worked a lot with IT project managers as well. One of the most frequent questions I get from the citizens of Taylor's Falls is about the website, and that might be true with each of us. No one is accountable for it, it seems, and until we put a project team together on it, a work group, I don't think we're going to move forward, we're not going to get the outcome we want. So I would suggest we have an accountable person from the council, whose job it is to lead that work group, put together a project plan with key tasks and milestones, and we just work towards it. I don't think it's ever going to get done the way we want it to unless there's a very clean goal in mind. And I don't know, Troy, you have an IS background, I think. The project plans, I'm used to seeing them from, from our IT departments, is just incredible. And it's not easy work, and you want to have it done right, you need a. You need to think everything through. So that, that would be my recommendation. And to have a, a web developer, I don't know who's helping us do that.
I'm sorry.
But, um, the citizens certainly have some input that would be valuable to a work group like that.
Yeah.
I think it just needs to have regular attention put towards it, like weekly meetings.
Yeah, and I guess I come from a different, um, background. Um, database management is, is my background, actually, but, um, in my opinion, instead of hiring or instead of, um, bringing together a project team, I think we just find somebody who can do it. Uh, and that means we either hire a person that could do it, or we contract somebody who can do it, but we get it done. Um, it, it's, it's gone on too long, and I don't think, um, getting a bunch of, a group of people together to discuss something, you know, on a weekly or monthly basis is going to move us forward as fast as just hiring somebody that can do it, um, and let them do it.
So the problem, I, as I see it, and, and again, I, I've seen these projects hundreds of times.
Oh, yeah.
We can figure something, but they don't, they don't know our business. They don't know the ordinance book.
Right, but.
People to give them input on and develop processes to do this. If it were easy, as easy as hiring somebody, I would imagine we would have done that two years ago. I think that's why it's wallowing in kind of this no man's land of, you know, which way should I go? Just wear that way. It needs, it needs discipline, and it needs formality. And we can't hold anybody accountable right now because they don't, there's no accountability list, so. I just don't have a lot of faith that the magic bullet is bringing some, a web developer in. They'll lead the process. That will be their role, but it's going to take input from a lot of different people on how it should look, what should be in there, where should it be?
It's all time.
That's about as far away from my area of expertise as I could get, but I could add some input on what I'd like to see.
Yeah, um, I guess as far as how it should look, uh, it should give the people of the city and us council members what we need. Uh, we should have minutes there. We should have our zoning ordinances up there. Uh, we should have office hours up there. We should have phone numbers up there. Uh, we should have our city code up there. We should have emergency response numbers up there. We should have the law enforcement connections up there. Um, it, it really, um, we've got tons of beautiful pictures of Taylor's Falls. We can just step outside and take a picture if you want something for a background. That wouldn't be that difficult. I still think, um, the reason, part of, here's the catch with, in, in 2023 now, in the 21st century, is, um, when you say we don't know what we're doing, the reality is you're kind of right. We don't because we don't have the information, and the reason we don't have the information is because it's not on the website. I can't go find minutes, uh, I can't go find agendas. The, the minutes from 2021 are just completely missing. How hard can it be to get the minutes up there? It, it's, it's not that difficult. It's our responsibility, it's our constitutional responsibility to keep people informed, and it would be easier for all of us to do our jobs if that information was there.
I don't think anybody's hard to.
It's not that hard just to hire somebody to do it, but we just got to do it. We just got to find a contractor that's willing to do it. We're costing the city more money now by not getting this done. And like I said, it is a public safety issue. Law enforcement would like this stuff. We're not, we're really, we're really being negligent of our responsibility by not having this website up. This is 2023.
Is it possible that we could go to the league for some direction?
Yeah.
They've got to have an IP or a website developer that deals with cities that can help us. I would imagine, but with nobody accountable to do that, I don't know how it's going to work its way through. It's not magic. Um, and with councilmember Anderson, I, I don't disagree with any of your concerns. I'm just trying to find a way to make sure this happens and happens well, and it happens quickly. And without a process, it isn't going to do either of those things. None of us are going to be happy.
What, what was the, do you guys, Mayor, do you recall the date that we spent the money to get the new site developed last year, last council? Was it in the spring?
I, I don't.
So that money's in cash, so it's sitting there, right? We just need the information now on the website? Is that what we're waiting for? I mean, the platform is built.
Right, everything's pretty much built, we just need to get the information out there. We need to find information or to get there.
It was 2020.
It was.
Can I ask a question from somebody in the audience?
Sure.
Is that all right? Becky, would you mind if we pick your brain for a second?
That's fine.
Okay, um, Becky knows IT, and I believe Becky could help us. And she is in my mind who I would go to if I needed help. And so i- if we have the platform built, or is it, is it my fault that we're not scann-? And seriously, I, I inherited the mess that we're cleaning up right now, so, um, do I need to scan things and get it to you? If we hired you, is that what you wait for, is me to scan minutes to you, and then you can get them on there? Is that all it takes?
Yeah, or, I mean, if I had the documents, I could scan them and make the PDFs and get them on there.
And Fritz, if we hire somebody such as Becky or somebody else, if we go to the league, can we, um, do, do we have to have them sign something since we're giving them documents in our office and giving them access to our office? Is there something that we could create so that it protects the citizens, the city, and us?
Yes, yes, I mean, we need to create those documents, and they would need to sign them. Um, and you can always do, you've been through the, the, uh, request for proposal process. I have seen requests where exactly this kind of service go through the league, so that can be going on simultaneously. You wouldn't have to bid this out, it's a, it's a, uh, a service contract in essence. Although you will advise and define it as best you can in writing. Um, so if you have somebody in mind that works and you can all agree on, you can certainly do that. But I would suggest to you that if you're looking, and not quite sure where to look, other, you're, you're not the first folks down the path. Others have gone through, like seen, um, IT kinds of requests, website requests put out on the, on the league's, uh, website. And, you know, it doesn't, I don't think it costs you anything, does it?
No, not with vendors.
Yeah, and so you go hard or foul, but I'd like to mention that if anything, you're likely to be fled with proposal.
So let's do this, let's have something on the next agenda. So, um, I will put it together, um, what we're looking for, um, and we can contact, I'll contact the league and see if they have a list. I'm also going to, um, share that with Mary to share somehow with our local residents. If, if we have somebody local that would be interested in, um, offering their services for a fee. And, um, so in two weeks, I'll come back with all that information, and, uh, we'll move forward with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I.
Yes, sir. No, no, please.
But, but the league does have preferred vendors.
Okay.
And so one of the things that you could ask the city is whether or not they would have any preferred vendors. Ideally, they've got a preferred vendor that does just this, and somebody else has already asked all the crazy questions that you could possibly conceive of as answers to those questions, and they would have some suggestions right away. At least I hope it would be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, would it be of any help to contact the local communities and see who they've used? I've heard somebody mention that they all have this stuff done, and it's all well-baked. We want to be like them, kind of. So would it help, uh?
Well, I think we have, I mean, we have the site done, so, I mean, we just need somebody.
See, I've never seen it, I, I've heard of it. It's like this magical thing that's.
It's just done, it's just trying to get the information out there and find the information to get it out there. So there will be a lot of scanning involved on things that we don't already have.
Now, um, I, I'm all in favor of, let's do this as soon as possible, let's get somebody to do this. I don't want to drag them down too much if we can't find the information they're looking for. So I, I think that's important, that, um, you know, we, we find a way to make sure we know what we have when we get it out there. So, um, I guess that goes back to something we'll probably discuss a little bit later, but, um, we need to get that office up to speed.
Well, I think once we have our temp position in place, um, we have, I think we'll have resources to help better expedite it. Wouldn't say necessarily expedite, but more better get the process going. So, um, if we can get a plan together on what we want to prioritize and get that done, I, I think, I think we'll have the resources to do it.
All right, well, um, let's keep on moving forward here. Um, I'll put that on the next agenda. I'll get that over to you, Mary. Thank you for a good discussion on that. Uh, we completed the old business, so on to the new business. Um, number one is a sale of a TIP district, uh, TIP district, uh, one dash two. Um, I believe they're asking our approval if we looked in the packet, um, for us to agree to the sale of the property. And, uh, our city attorney, uh, he did review this, um, he, he did let us know that we should, we can go forward with it. Um, he did say, um, I'll go ahead and read it. Um, under the terms of the TIP agreement, the developers are known by the city of its intent to acquire, um, for its rights to another property. Uh, section eight point one of the TIP agreement states that the transfer, the assignment of the property is prohibited without prior written approval by the city. No such transfer, transfer relieves the developer of any liability in any agreement unless the city provides a release of writing. In addition, um, our partners and others went through this as well. They said we can move forward, but the addition to it is, the developers also requesting that the council review two development agreements in the townhomes. Um, and we need to make sure that we hold them accountable and make sure that anything they agree to do in completion is done before we move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I am the owner.
Oh, welcome, come on up, come on up.
You guys have any questions?
Yeah.
My name's Tim. No, well, Dee.
Hi, Tim.
You're welcome. Um, but basically, this TIP district is expired as of this December, so it's kind of a moot point. But it was put in by elders into this contract 25 years ago, that if we would have sold during that 25-year period of time, which we technically have, we needed your permission. And at that point in time, there was things that needed to be done, uh, rules that needed to be applied by, and basically, everything's been done, and we've applied it by all the rules, so.
Um, one, one thing that's mentioned here, um, from our attorney, and maybe he could speak on this a little more, but, uh, what would be required is a written statement by a developer of its recognition of the ongoing obligations. And that it should be a precondition for approval. Is that something, have we received that?
Um, nobody's asked for it, but I can provide it, I can agree to provide it.
I can answer that. I have asked for it, they were trying to get it together before tonight.
Oh, lawyers, I think the lawyers were working on it.
Yes, so they were working on it.
Is that reference to the two development agreements?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Do you know what those were, the agreements?
They were just development rooms, I built those apartments down there on Linden Street.
Yeah.
25 years ago, and we, we reran in all the public utilities at that time. They weren't bound to that area of talent back then. And I took the responsibility and took the cost and brought them in to that part of town, and then I asked for some assistance in the form of tax increment financing.
And then I've got one more question, and I, I think this might be directed at the attorney, but, um, we did in October, we, we missed our filing deadline for our TIP districts. Um, and the, the money was withheld from, from the city. It came from the office, the state auditor, and then, um, and then we were informed by the county that we had missed our deadline and that they were withholding the dispersment of that, of that money, if I understand this correctly. Has that been taken care of? Have we received that money, or are we?
Absolutely, and I believe I mentioned that at the very next council, we were never withheld the money. We just needed to get the reports done, and elders were fully aware. I was working with them at the time when you brought it up, so everything's been done. Everything fell through all at once, nothing was held up.
And, and I guess I'm not really sure if, if that would be something, obviously, if we were in default of that or hadn't, you know, hadn't filed our reports, how that would affect the sale of the property in, in tune with it.
No, ordinarily, I wouldn't expect that it would, it's more of a comp for the city, but evidently, that's been resolved.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if you want me to address any?
I, I mean, hybrid your memo, um, if you want to speak any to it for the rest of the council here.
For, yeah, for the public, for the rest.
Yes, please do.
Um, it's, you know, the site was requested here is, is approval, which is required, uh, under the, under the TIP, uh, under the TIP agreement. And, um, that can be provided by you. Um, if that request is, under the circumstances, not an unreasonable one, uh, provided that there has to be in writing and an agreement or an understanding on the part of the developer that any additional obligations of developer may, uh, will be met. In other words, they're not by getting into this, getting out of anything. And usually, this happens, mid-agreement, here you're at the end of it, so I don't take a risk, he was right. Um, the other part of it, though, that was included in the request, as I understand it, that we saw in the elders' letter, were the two tax increment financing, um, or rather, the two development agreements that were related to the property. And they were asking that the city basically sign off on that. Normally, the process would last done, and, yeah, these are old, and I know it's, it's, these things tend to slide along, and people aren't maybe necessarily paying attention. But ordinarily, before I'd advise the city to do that, I would want to see some verification, usually be in the form of a city engineer or a city consultant or somebody, who'd verify that the conditions that, that were contained in those, uh, agreements were fulfilled. In which case, the city could sign off, but if in fact that wasn't the case, there would be somebody that the city could then turn to and say, wait a minute. Um, you know, we have, we're liable for the cost, let's say, of another way of asphalt or something like that, and you said it was certified and it was done. You're, you're going to have to pay it. In other words, liability would be to that, in fact, usually it's an engineering firm, but that liability would be there. Here, we're not looking at that kind of circumstance, but the trade-off would be, we would need that kind of certification or verification from the developer if you're going to be signing this off. Uh, what came to the city came from, from a, a title company, which is fine. But when the title company prepares its documents, title companies focuses on getting the title company stuff done. And so there were a couple of these contingencies, obviously, that, that were on the record that they wanted to get rid of. And they didn't care what the city certified, they didn't care where it came from, they just wanted some statement in the record saying that these conditions have been met. I can't tell you that the conditions have been met. I don't know that any of you individually are ready to stand out there and say, oh, sure, you know, I'll verify that. So as I see it, the way around it here would be for, and I understand that, that he seems to be agreeable with that, would be for the developer to provide that certification. I certified, you know, all, uh, conditions that were required of me on these two developments, these two development agreements were in fact met. And I hold the city free and clear of any potential liability, you know, words to that effect, uh, if, if I'm wrong. That's really what it comes down to. So I, I was able to recommend that, that you could certainly pass a resolution approving, and my understanding was that there had been a written uh, agreement on the part of the developer saying, under the terms of the TIP agreement, that, uh, that they were prepared to do whatever else they needed to do if anything. So based on that condition, then you could, in fact, agree to, uh, to release, release them from the, the tax increment financing for purpose of the record. I'm not in a position, however, to recommend that you do the same for the second request, which is for the, uh, which is for the, uh, agreements, the development agreements. That should be something that could be fixed if someone is, is prepared to come in and take that position and relieve the city of that responsibility.
I have a question. So the first part was to approve the sale to the new owners. So the first part was to approve the sale to the new owners, not, because I think you had them so.
Okay, probably.
So it's to approve the sale.
To approve the sale, it's subject to the written verification by the developer of the imposed conditions. Second thing they were asking for had to do with the two different developing agreements on the property. Thank you for clearing that up.
Any questions?
So we can go forward with approving the sale and the condition that the, the land use permits were, are here too? Is that what we're saying, or waiting on verification?
I, I think a written statement by the developer, developer.
Yeah.
On recognizing ongoing obligations.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
That, that would be a, that's a precondition.
Soon as you get that, then we can approve it.
Correct.
And you can approve subject to the receipt of that.
Yes. Tim, you have any questions?
That was my, my question. We can conditionally approve it.
Yes, you can.
Okay. Okay.
So I do have a question then. I, so you would work with this resolution after we receive that document?
We have a draft of the resolution that we worked on that.
Right.
Actually is fine.
Okay.
Almost as is, a couple extra words. So if, as an additional condition, you would ask that, that I presume that the staff would draft the final, final resolution language in conformity with what it is if you're passing it. And then we'll come back for another show.
And, and we make, we make no movement at all on the other, at this point, at the other, the other properties, the other.
Yes, I, that is my recommendation.
Right, okay. So it would just be this one, this one TIP district at this point. And I, and I, I will make that motion that we approve this with the condition that that letter is received.
All right, Councilman Troy, motion to.
Yeah, that's a precondition of the approval. So only, only if that letter is received, then, then I will conditionally make a motion to approve it.
Okay. And that resolution's twenty-three dash zero two dash zero one for the record. We have a motion to approve for the certification.
Can I make one correction? I believe it should be twenty twenty-three dash number two dash one.
And we have a second by Tim. All those in favor?
All right.
I opposed. Ian Adams.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Our next agenda for new business is we have Jake from Boltman Mink. Thank you for being patient with us. Welcome, both of you.
I was a colleague of mine, Jenny. So no, no action items from us tonight, but I just wanted to say hi and say, I've met a lot of you. I don't know if this got into that. I think it did, okay. So. So Boltman Mink's been the city engineer of Taylor's Hall since 2010. Myself personally, I have been a city engineer since 2018. We pretty much deal in everything, public infrastructure related. As you see from this, this list has grown quite a bit of all the services that we offer since I even started at Boltman Mink. I was going to start with all our street and sewer services that we offer, but I did want to throw out there, we do project website development, if anybody needs. We have a kind of a unique experience, but we, we've put together lots of public project websites and we've helped cities in the past organize, whether it's actually building it, I hear it's already been built, but if you need help organizing or, you know, we have a lot of people who kind of figure out the best way of where to put the codes and the zoning ordinances and all that stuff organized on the websites. We do have staff that deals with that sort of thing. So whether you work with us or you need help putting together an RFP to go out for that type of service, we could probably help you with that as well. But, so my background personally is in municipal engineering, so dealing mostly with capital improvement plans, street projects, water, sewer. I know we do construction inspection. We've inspected the painting of the water tower here in town. We reconstructed River Street a few years ago. So I, I, I'm your main contact with Boltman Mink, but we have lots of experts behind me that, that help me out. So and then, and also hearing all your conversations this year about zoning and planning, I brought Jenny with me, who's a senior planner at Boltman Mink, who's have a lot more experience in that than I do. So I thought she could answer some of your questions and kind of give a background of what Boltman Mink offers in that regard.
Thanks, Jake. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Jake said, my name is Jenny Culpner. I'm a senior planner at Boltman Mink. Prior to joining Boltman Mink this year, I was the community development director in Burnsville for about seventeen years and did planning experience for ten years before that. So I know cities, I know government, I know planning, I know elders. I know exactly what you're talking about here. So what can Boltin and Mink or another planning consultant help you with? And, and I will add that the philosophy of Boltin and Mink is that we want to serve our clients in any way that we can help. Jake talked about website. We do wetland delineations, we do environmental reviews, we do planning. Like, we want to help the communities that we are in as best as we can. So they added community planning probably about ten years ago, something like that. So planning, what can we help you with? Long range planning, comprehensive planning, site plan, master plans, downtown redevelopment plans. We have grant writing experts, right? We have people who write grants for a living. They can, they can help you get some money for some of your plans and plan, not only creating your plans, implementing the plans. I'm going to do site plan review. We are city planners in smaller communities. So the closest one to you that comes to mind, we're the city planners in Scandia, just down the road. I'm the temporary planner right now in Lake Elmo. They don't have a planner, they call up, hey, can you help us out? Yes, we're helping them out temporarily until they hire someone. So we do temporary stuff, we do permanent city planning, short term, mid range, long term. So we are here to help our clients. We love the cities in Minnesota. We want to see them continue to be great cities and we have the experts, we think, that can help with that. We do zoning ordinance rewrites, subdivision rewrites. We can help you with your process. We do work in a lot of cities. We have experienced team members, so with a lot of knowledge and experience, what works, what doesn't work. We can help with park planning, trail planning. Where's the best place for parks? We can help you deal with the Met Council, if that's a thing that you have to deal with there, I think it is. Community engagement, we do a lot of that on our road projects, planning projects, and also our transportation planning stuff that Jake talked about. So a lot of project coordination. So we're just, I'm here to share information, what we do. You may not know that, and I hope we're a preferred vendor on the lease. But anyways, we're just here to answer your general questions about, about planning that you have. I'll leave my card with the, with the clerk too, if you have a follow-up questions.
Yeah, I think, well, I'd like a card too.
Sure.
Got enough of them.
I do.
Are you ready to take some questions?
Sure.
Okay, great. So I'm just curious, do, do we have a contract with Boltin and Mink?
Uh, as far as I know, there was one signed in 2010.
Okay.
If you'd like, I don't, I tried to find a signed copy, it did not locate one. If, I'd be willing to get another one written up so that we're on the same page, fresh contract. I mean, obviously, with, with our contracts, it's not like an open checkbook. Any services or work we do would be pre-approved by the council. We would bring a scope and fee to you and decide on the terms of, of our work before charging the city anything.
Okay, that would, yeah, that would be great. We approved something a while ago, but I, I never saw an actual contract I've gotten. This is your, you know, like the third promo piece I've gotten, but I haven't seen a contract. So thank you for answering that, because I, I think if the council agrees, I think we could certainly use a contract on file here. If the last one was 2010, that would be great if we could get that. And then I guess, connected with that, the zoning ordinances rewrites and the website development and all that stuff, that, that sounds great. How much does that cost? Is that part of the contract? Can it be written into or how does that work with your fee schedule?
Well, I would think it would, it depends, council member. Everything depends, right? On how expensive it is, how much, how many changes we're looking at, how much community engagement we want to have. Because that is a big part of some of the budgets when we look at code rewrites. Do you have a comprehensive plan that is current? Like, what is your vision for the community? Because zoning ordinances are built off of comprehensive planning and your vision, right? It's the tool that implements that. So we, we can do scopes of work to get to the nuts and bolts. So we could do a scope of work, add it on to an engineering contract. For instance, we could have a separate planning contract. So we have separate planning contracts in most of our communities, and then we do scope of works that have budgets specifically tied to specific projects.
Would you say you, you replace the responsibilities of what a commission would do, for example? Or do you assist the commission? So let's say we have, we have a redevelopment commission here in the city hypothetically. Would, do you, do you replace that? Do you replace that commission? Is, is that how you see your role or do you, do you assist that commission or?
Council member, as your consultants, we are here to help you and assist you. So in some cities or townships that we serve, we are the city planner. So in that instance, we take on the role of the staff or an extension of staff. In other communities, we're an expert in something that, they may have a planner, but maybe that planner doesn't know redevelopment, right? So we're kind of that expert there. So it, it depends. I would say we primarily work with communities and what they have. A planning commission, we do not take the role of a planning commission. That's a separate body, of course, called out by statute. We're here to help them and make sure they have the information to make the decisions. Redevelopment commissions is something a little, little different. I know there's like downtown development things that we've dealt with, but we're here to, to augment what you have.
Because I believe we do have a comprehensive plan viable.
Yeah, I was, if I may.
Yeah, no, please, go ahead.
I was going to ask that about ordinances and comprehensive plans. Is there a recommended frequency at which those should be reviewed, reviewed, revised? Ours are pretty dated. I mean, some of our ordinances are lack of signature. It's a copy, but there's no web signature on it. So is there a frequency?
Well, it's, I mean, ten years to me seems pretty old, right? Ten years, so like your cop plan by the Met Council says it should be updated every ten years, and there's good reason for that. You know, communities that are growth communities have development, development pressures. Like, maybe the rules that, that were in place five years ago were good for five years, but in today's day and age, they're not good because we have a lot of development pressure and people want to sell their property. Now, maybe your sewer and water bear the ability to do so. Statutes change too on certain things. We had changes in the variance statutes years ago. So something that was hardship is now practical difficulty. So that may change how you look at things and how you look at your zoning ordinance. So councils change, right? The attitude, you have a turnover in a, in a council that wants a new direction. Well, then they should start with their cop plan and what's their vision and then what are their zoning ordinances to do that? So there, there's no one magic number, but knowing what you have, if your, things are pretty old, if you're being challenged by the development community, boy, it's so hard to do business here. Why can't I do this? You know, but those are good indicators to maybe take a look at things, especially if they're things that you want in your community.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any questions?
I promise I won't talk for the rest of the year. But I, I have some questions. It's an opportunity, an opportunity for, and I, I'll break that promise, I won't make that. It's an opportunity for an educational moment for all of us, I think. So you were talking about construction inspection. And you were here for the earlier discussion that we had. And there we were dealing, since before your time at Boltin, so, and before Boltin's time here. So you're not really responsible for those two development agreements. But don't you normally, as part of what you would do, when there's a development agreement, you look at the checklist, the things that the developer is required to do, and ultimately, you're the one that decides and recommends to the city whether those are done or not, right?
Yep.
Yeah. And at the end of that, if there's anything on the escrow, you're the ones that make that recommendation. Say, oh, yeah, you can, you can give it all back or you've all it back, but ten percent because there's some grass in escrow. That's really a recommendation that you make to the city, right?
Correct, yeah. We, from pretty much the beginning, where, whether we were in a process and of how much, you know, we, we have a list of what performance measures we want to have.
You, you look at the, and I'm going to interrupt, but I just want to just get that concept out there because obviously, that hasn't happened here. And that, that, that's the person, or whoever was your predecessor, or whoever's your successor, I'm not saying, but that's the person that would tell you. And, and that's the company that would be responsible if they're mistaken in what their assessment is. Yeah, we didn't have that, so we're doing a workaround here. As far as recommending a workaround, they're the ones that would do it, but a workaround here. But your being here is very convenient because I think it, it points out that, that problem that we have with that property and prospectively, how it would have to be handled perhaps differently. And that's something you would routinely do, correct?
Yes, and, and as the city engineers, mostly streets and utilities.
Right, but, but there's a more important part of that because a development agreement requires the developer to pay for you when you're doing that.
Correct.
So that would come out of, that wouldn't be city funds when there's development. That would be developer funds that would pay you for telling the city that it's done, right?
Yep. And prior to the development agreement, a lot of cities will have a build back agreement before they even agree to all the terms to, to cover some of those review fees upfront.
Okay, I just want to make that clear, Mr. Mayor, because I, I think it wasn't quite clear in terms of what had happened before. But I mean, prospectively, I think this would be something that you may want to consider. And it's not something where you're thinking, we can't afford Boltman to go out and do our, you know, you don't have to. It's the developer that would pay in those kinds of cases and it makes your job a lot easier.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chris. So could I ask how much knowledge do you have of the TIP districts that we have currently?
Uh, very little. I was never involved, I don't know much.
So you don't know anything about them at, at this point? Now, this is, this is kind of what you were mentioning, wasn't it, Chris? So I guess how do, what can we do to, you know, and this is part of the contract, but what happened? How, how are we discussing these TIP districts? And you're not aware of, aware of them? You don't know, you have no knowledge of them. But shouldn't it be something that, that's part of, part of what you do and have done?
Uh, like I said, if this was from twenty-five years ago or how, you know, how long, it would have been whoever was engineer at the time. Probably, I don't know the exact details of the project, but if we need some technical advice on, on what's existing, I mean, we can provide it, but we certainly.
Your firm came on board in 2010 for the city, correct?
What's that?
Your firm came on board with the city in 2010?
Correct, yeah.
So this dates back.
Yeah.
Right, but, but it would normally be something you, you would educate yourself on as, when you came on board, I would think. I mean, that should be one thing you would, would look at. I, and I'm not, I'm not blaming you, I'm just wondering how this wasn't communicated to you? Why, why weren't you aware of this? How, what was it?
If I, if I can, council member, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The TIP agreements and things that happened, I've learned a lot transitioning from public sector to consulting, right? So a lot of this, the onus is on your administrator to let their consultants know, let their attorney know. We have these agreements and to share that information. If that information isn't passed to your consultant or your legal team, we, we don't know. We don't go looking through your files for everything necessarily. We don't even have access to your files half of the time. So we, you, you really helps have a strong administrator, a strong clerk that knows about these things, that you have these. Outlook is great now to put when contracts expire or reminders to go do an inspection in the summer, you know, those kinds of things to help us keep track of things that way. But it's, if we're asked, if Jake is asked to do that, certainly then he would. That's part of our contract work with you, but he wouldn't know about those unless he was told. And he wouldn't go write down, oh, there's a TIP agreement, I need to check this. He wouldn't, he wouldn't proactively do that either. He would wait for an administrator or a mayor or an attorney to ask him to go do that.
So I guess that was my question. It, it does really fall on the administrator at that point, whoever that might be. And I'm, I'm wondering, who do you, do you know, I mean, you've been here long enough, who? And I'm, I'm wondering, who do you, do you know, I mean, you've been here long enough, who, who have you, historically, who have you had on file as the administrator for the city's funds?
Well, I was Adam Berklin for the first few years that I was here and then Steve Had, after him.
Okay, and, and those are the people that communicated this information to you or reached out to you or needed anything?
Our role, or, uh, my role since being here has mainly been specific projects. City has come to me, administrator, Pollock Works has come to me and said, hey, we need to do this project. Can you design it, administer the contract and inspect it? That's kind of been our main role at the city. We certainly have the capability of, of to dig more into long-term planning and development agreements and stuff like that. But we haven't had, um, as a company, much involvement in day-to-day activities at the city.
Right, right, no, that's, that's good. So, um, most of your direct contact then has been with the administrator here. Uh, and that would be either Steve Had or Adam Berklin.
Yeah.
So you didn't have a lot of contact with, for example, the mayor?
No.
Oh, so what's?
Well, I mean, we had contact at council meetings and.
Oh, okay, okay. But, but as far as the business, the operations, it was all the administrator?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I'm just gonna, to say, council, um, recommended if the hotel would have gone for downtown, this is something we would have engaged your firm in helping us to build that development agreement requirements and any follow-up on that, correct? So from an educational perspective, we need to remember that.
You're casting an iron on your axe, Chris.
Yes.
Uh, I, yeah, I mean, whenever you get a development or development agreement that goes in, the engineer is, is usually brought in in part because I find that the engineer thinks of things that I don't as a lawyer. You know, I'm not an engineer, I'm a TV engineer. They're the ones that know, well, have you asked about this? Have you asked about that? So a lot of what the engineer, the input you get from the engineer actually goes into the development agreement. They're responsible for making sure before the city releases all funds, uh, at least that's the way it normally works, that the points that were made in the development agreement have been taken care of.
duly known in perspective, would you work?
And if I, if I can, while I'm here, um, as your attorney pointed out, a lot of the expenses for consultant development review are passed on to your applicant. So you should make sure it's in your agreement, that language is in there, um, and that it's in your adopted fee schedule and on your applications for land use applications, that there's usually an escrow that has to be paid and then, um, consultant's time for engineering, legal, uh, city planning can come out of that. Um, but when you do that, it sounds like, it sounds like you have a lot of staff issues. I've just been sitting here listening tonight and consultants can help you when you don't have a lot of staff, when people leave. Uh, we don't, may not know all the history, but we know the legal process, we know the timelines we're up against and we can help, we can, we can help you with those kinds of things. And the, and the costs are passed on to your applicants, not necessarily your taxpayers. So I always told my staff, use your resources, call the attorney if you need help, call a consultant. Um, we can be an extension of your staff if you, if you need that one, you need that.
Good?
Good.
Okay. Thank you both so much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, uh, next, uh, new business, um, was actually the MR, um, contractor coming in. But, uh, we are removing that, um, and Paul has the ability to take care of that, so we won't need to discuss that. But we did want to just skip over it because we want you to not think that we're hiding anything. So Paul's gonna take care of that. Um, number four would be update on the Schaefer Fire contract. Um, I know Troy was supposed to be going to a meeting with them. Did anybody else go with you, Troy, or was it just yourself?
No, it was, it was just me.
Okay.
Um, can I go ahead with that?
Yeah, please.
Um, the, well, the contract was rejected actually by the Schaefer Board. So, um, they did accept the, uh, Schaefer-Frankonia contract, they accepted the Elmo and, uh, Amador Township contract. Um, but they wanted me to, uh, take another look at our contract and, um, hopefully come back in March with something a little more agreeable for all of us. So I have asked, uh, Fire Chief Jake for, uh, for a meeting, which we are going to, um, Sunday, we'll take care tomorrow around five-thirty. And we'll, uh, take another look at it and see if we can, and I'm sure we can, I'm sure we can come up with something a little more agreeable that, um, Schaefer Township, uh, you know, like I said, can agree to. So we will go forward with that.
I have a question.
And I, oh, I'm sorry, I realized, as some, some people watch my attention, my typos in the contract. I, I carried it forward, it's been carried forward year after year after year. So I appreciate those being pointed out to me and I will take a look at those as well before, before I go back, okay?
So I, I did hear some scuttlebutt in the community about, um, Schaefer Township being dissatisfied with our proposal. And I didn't know anything about it, so I just Googled it. And the format we're using is right out of the League of Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Townships. I think they collaborated with a, a sample contract together with a funding formula. So my question, it looks like we follow the funding formula and they came out to whatever it was. Do the other townships follow that formula or just, they just stick a wet thumb in there, you know, I think it'll be five thousand dollars?
Yeah, no, thank you for asking that question. They do not, they do not follow that formula. Um, they'll walk in with their budgets, usually it's the fire chief that goes in and sell, uh, with the budget, explains how the year went. They always have runs, how many runs they made in those areas, um, and they base it basically on that. They look at their budget and then they look at, um, how many runs they made and they, and they kind of come up with an average. Nobody, we've been using that formula for a long time. And to be honest with you, I'm not, and I'll talk this over with Jake when I meet with him. I'm not sure how well it's working for us at this point. One of the, one of the main concerns, one of, one of the board members brought to my attention, and he was right, if I look at the runs, they're actually paying us, well, based on that formula, they're actually paying us more than they're paying some of these other fire departments. And, and we're giving them less runs, you know, that's a good thing, we have to go out there less. But, um, so I, I think that's something we could probably look at again is, you know, just they, I, I'm not sure that that formula is worth for Taylor's Falls any longer. Or maybe we need to readjust it, but it is all based on, and I triple calculated everything, it, it all came up. But it's based on estimated market value of taxable and, and tax exempt structures. And I'm, I'm just not sure that's, that's the path we want to take, but I will discuss it with Jake and we'll, we'll go forward. Most of them, what I can see, the average fire run is five hundred, medical is two, or is it the other way around, Jake?
Uh, I looked through the documents, most are charging the typical fire hundred per fire and a hundred for medical.
A hundred for medical, okay.
Never mind.
Right, okay. Um, and, and we were, we were ten thousand dollars over. We're following that formula, we're ten thousand dollars over the other contract. So, uh, I, I, I think there's plenty of room for improvement and, and I'll, we'll do our best to make that work.
Are we required by state statute or any, you know, fire regulations to use that formula?
I guess I'm not sure, we are not.
No, what I read, it was just a recommended.
The other, the other cities shared their formula or their reasoning with you or what, or did you get any information from them?
Oh, yeah.
Besides just what they charge, I mean, how they figure out?
Yeah, I, I was there, I think the runs are big, the number of runs, that you actually do and the type of runs that go in there. Um, everybody has budget concerns and we're no different there. So I, I think the nice thing about having, um, the fire chief there in, in their instances, where they were able to, if they had the budget, they were able to explain why, why things are going up. They, they knew all the equipment that they needed to get, they knew what the expiration dates were, uh, when things need to be primed, whether their tanks or anything else, and they were, you know, they were on top of it. So they could basically defend their contract, um, a little bit better. I mean, that, that's another thing that, uh, for, for some reason, Taylor's Falls has a history of sending the council member, um, you know, to, to these meetings. We're, I'm the only one there that was just a council member, but he also had the fire chief, so. Um, and that's fine, I don't mind doing that, but it, it, we're, we've been doing things a little bit differently for a long time and I think this is an opportunity for us to, uh, to kind of bring it back around and, um, you know, kind of hone in on, 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 on just the community connections we have with, with Schaefer Township a little bit better as far as the fire runs, so. It, it, it's all a good thing. And, uh, they've invited me back in March, so we'll see what we can come up with and, uh, we'll go from there and I'll keep the council updated.
So similar to the li, is the fire department similar to the library board where they control their own finances and make, can make their own decisions or is it, is that something that has to come to the council approval of that contract?
Oh, the council definitely will need to approve the contract, right? Uh, well, their board needs to approve it. First, you know, it'd be, it's better if their board says yes and then they bring it back here. Then it'd be great if you guys say yes, um, but if you don't, then, then I'll have to go back, you know, back and forth. That's, that's part of my job.
So these may be questions for the, our financial firms that we contract with. How are the revenues accounted for this in the budget?
That's a, that's a good question and I think, um, uh, Mary should be able to help you with some of that. What funded would go into?
I mean, but I would have to look. I don't know enough.
I, I could guess, but they, the numbers weren't adding up.
I, I don't know if our budget specifically pointed out the revenues.
And I will say that was a difference.
Expenses, cause I know the other funds show the revenues, but I don't, I don't think so.
Cause then I also had a question about the expenses related to the capital equipment. I'm used to seeing a depreciation schedule and that being part of your ongoing operational expense. I don't see that in our budget. Maybe it's a, maybe municipalities don't do that, I don't know. But I didn't see one single depreciation line item on there. We're budgeting seventy thousand dollars a year for a new truck, I think, to help fund a new truck. Are those capital investments included in what we're proposing? Cause they don't look like they're part of the budget. I'm guessing they're not.
Well, they, they should be. I mean, that's, that's one of the difficulties I had with, the budget that I took with me was not, was not helpful. Okay, it wasn't helpful. It didn't have enough, um, it didn't have enough information, basically. Uh, the, the, we need the percentages. I, you know, I would like to be able to go to the Schaefer Board and say, this increased by this percent, this percent, this percent. And there was no percentages on the budget. I think that's kind of what you're talking about too. So it would have been nice to have a little more detailed budget, um, but it, but it is more than that. It's not just the budget, it's, like I said, it's the runs, um, and, and just the overall cost of it going up, but.
Uh, I know anything that I wanted to add would only add to the cost, which they're not gonna agree to anyway. But it, it's really, our budget isn't the true cost of operating our fire department, I guess, where I'm getting to.
Right.
Loans, whatever, capital investments that we're planning for, none of that are in the expense budget.
Right, right. But we also, we usually have an actual, you know, we have a budget of money and an actual amount spent for each, for each line. So.
Correct.
I, I think that's important to keep that, that in mind as well. I mean, that, and that would be another thing, if I could go up to Schaefer and just, you know, say, um, um, you know, this increased by this much, this is what we budgeted, but this is what actually came in, this is how much it actually cost. There's a reason why, you know, there, there's a whole, um, different factors that I could choose.
So I'll save all my other questions for the financial teams.
So that would be the update and I will keep posted.
Thanks Troy. Uh, sticking with the fire department, um, Jake had asked the council, um, for approval and for us to go out for bids for cutting a new, cutting a doorway, a new, uh, concrete wall. He did say he could do it, or he said the liaisons could do it, he's open, cause he knows we are short-staffed. So, um, I spoke to him before the meeting just to find out what he would like to do, what Troy would like to do, if you want to be, you know, spearheading the RFP and, and, you know.
No, I, I think, um, Jake, Jake's got enough context to just, um, put, put this out for bid on his own. I don't know, do you think there'll be three?
I could, I could buy three.
Okay, that'd be great, so. I thought you were talking about cutting the wall on their own, but I'm not sure.
Some of those are engineered, Mike.
Please have engineering make sure it's not a structural.
Okay, so, um, we'll just, do we need to do a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion if we can, if we approve, um, Fire Chief to send, uh, send out bids, go out for bids for putting a hole in the wall.
So I do have an example motion. Are you good with that example on the bottom of that page?